We will go ahead and begin. I will offer an invocation, after which our pledge of allegiance will be led by our county attorney, Steve Hadfield. Our dear only Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to gather here for this meeting this evening. We're especially thankful for this time of the year and to celebrate the holidays. And we would ask a special blessing to be upon our law enforcement and our EMS folks and those that keep our roads clear and allow us to be safe. Please bless them that they may be safe in their duties and be able to return to their homes and to their families each evening. We're especially thankful for the wonderful area we live in, for all the many blessings we enjoy. Please bless us this evening as we discuss the needs and the items on this agenda that we may make the best decision for the county and for our citizens. Again, we're thankful for all that thou did do for us, and we say these things in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Steve. All right. Did you gentlemen have anything that we needed to cover? Any prior business, correspondence? Any past items?
I don't. You want us to do minutes first? Do you want us to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I'm just going up to the top of that one, so. Either way.
I'll make a motion when we approve the minutes from November 20th, 2019.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We did bring up one item during our work session. There was a tax deferral that we were talking about. We'll continue to work on that, and that'll probably come up on another agenda, so.
For Perry City.
For Perry City. So, okay. All right, moving right along. Jill, taking the place, Carl?
Yes.
All right, come on up. If you'll just state your name for the record, so that it's on the archives and...
Jill Jepson.
Okay.
Representing Bear River Water.
You're probably gonna have to sit down and get the mic to you, so they can hear you. Sorry. Come on.
Okay, are we good?
Yep.
So I'm here tonight to ask the commission to reappoint three of our board members for another term. David Forsgren, Roger Friedal, and Charles Holmgren have all expressed interest in continuing to serve. And we wanted to state that combined, these three gentlemen have already served on our board for 57 years.
Wow.
Between the three of them, they are some long-term
Wow.
public servants.
So Charles has got 50, and the other two can split up the seven?
Actually, David Forsgren's been on our board since day one, 32 years.
Oh, my goodness.
And Charles Holmgren has been on the board 17 years, and Roger Friedal has been on for eight years.
Wow.
And so, we're really appreciative that they want to continue for another four-year term.
That's cool.
We're just thrilled to have them stay. They're actually serving as our
Chair, Vice Chair, and Treasurer.
Yeah. So, you know, we are really glad to have them, and we just want it noted that they have been and will continue to be fantastic public servants.
Yeah, there's some institutional knowledge there. Okay.
For sure.
I'll make a motion when we approve or reappoint to the Bear River Water Conservancy District, David Forsgren, Roger Friedal, and Charles Holmgren.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
To you.
Chrissy, you need to tell us when we're meeting, in January.
Okay. My name is Chrissy Bennett, and last meeting, last commission meeting, you approved the holiday schedule, the public meeting schedule, and the landfill holiday schedule, per what we decided to do in January. January 1st is a holiday. There are five Wednesdays in January, so we just moved everything back a week. Your first meeting will be January 8th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. The second meeting will be January 22nd, 2020, at 11:30 AM.
Okay.
I'll make a motion when we approve the 2020 schedule for commission and the landfill.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks, Chrissy. Okay, our 507 agenda item has been tabled, and so, Mr. Lyons.
All right, first item is ordinance 505, and this should actually read Davis Rezone. So it's the request from the applicant, who's the landowner. He submitted an application requesting that 19 acres be rezoned. Fifteen of those 19 acres are currently zoned A-20, and four of those acres are zoned CG, which is general commercial. A-20 is 20-acre agricultural. So this item went to the planning commission. Public hearing was held, and the planning commission, they held a thorough discussion on what to do. There was some opposition from one neighboring landowner during the public hearing. The planning commission discussed the item, considered some modifications to the original request. In the end, they didn't feel comfortable making modifications to it without the applicant present, so they forwarded a recommendation of denial to the county commission. So now it comes before you. With that being said, you're familiar with the original request, 15 acres of A-20 and four acres of CG. His request is to rezone those to RR2, Rural Residential 2-Acre. I've met with the applicant since the planning commission meeting. He was curious what their motion was. I let him know that it was a motion to deny, or a recommendation to deny, excuse me. His request was if the county commissions open it to modify that from the original 19 acres down to just the four acres that's zoned commercial, and that four-acre commercial would be zoned back to the RR2, Rural Residential 2-Acre. So if you're still following me after all of that, at this point...
It's scary, but we are.
So the only portion of the rezone would just be the four that is CG, and that would be taken down to two RR2 parcels?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's okay with them?
So the planning commission hasn't seen that.
Right.
So...
But it's okay with the landowner?
That's okay with the landowner.
Okay.
So at this point, the county commission, they can take the planning commission's recommendation of denial. The county land use code allows the county commission to modify the request, so you can take that modification that the applicant suggested and modify it down to the four acres. Or you can also take that modification and kick it back to the planning commission and have them take a look at it, and then pass that modified request back to you for final approval. Or you can...
Do we have a time restraint? Is this something that has to happen? Like, is there a reason?
Not that I'm aware of. The landowner is here, if you...
He's shaking his head like that, so I guess that means no. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, I mean, yeah, those are your various options.
I'd feel more comfortable with the third option, as far as having the planning commission just review it.
Well, that's what I was saying. If there was a time restraint, I think we could probably roll it over and probably talk about it now and maybe do that. But if there's not a time restraint, I'd just kick it back and have them look it over and do it that way, too.
I know that there was a lot of discussion about the area and the plan that was in place, and so I don't know how this would play into that, because that wasn't an option. And so I would, you know, kind of concur with what's been said, have them review it, and then, you know, send it back, so.
And we can get that on the December meeting. The public hearing was already held on it in November, so we can put it back on December's meeting, and then have it back to you guys in January.
Yes, that would be on January 8th, would be the latest.
So I make a motion that we table this ordinance 505, and
I'll just
Kick it back.
Kick it back to the planning commission and bring it forth to us later.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item is the Colton K subdivision. This is a one-lot subdivision located at 5635 West, 1600 North. It's a half-acre subdivision, and it has been reviewed by all county departments, and comes before you with a recommendation of approval.
I would make a motion when we approve the Colton K subdivision.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And the final item is the Coombe subdivision. This is a two-lot subdivision located at 15665 North, 4400 West. The first lot, Lot 1, is 5.8 acres. Lot 2 is 1 acre. Again, this one has been reviewed by all applicable county departments and comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
I'll make a motion when we approve the Coombe subdivision, two lot.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I might have stated that first one wrong, Maura. I think the motion was actually made by
Hadfield.
Yeah. Yeah, just when I repeated it, so. Okay.
Wait.
Do you want to sign those now? Okay. What's that?
Might as well.
Yeah. I was waiting for you to roll it up before I asked if you wanted to sign it, so. Okay.
What's that?
Oh, really?
I didn't want to dink it up, but I won't. But since I am, I didn't give up. I just have to fix it. Keep it, fix it, trust me.
I know.
It's like fixing Felix. Yeah. He's had to fix his time.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
I know. I agree.
I'm gonna have to wait another minute or two.
Is there anything you want to cover on this before we formally open the public hearing, Mr. Carter? Okay.
What are you looking for? I'll bet we can stretch that one over there.
Okay, it's 5:15. We will go ahead and open the public hearing for the 2020 budget, and I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Tom to...
We'll discuss the RDA budget as well.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can go ahead and we'll open that up.
Anyway. So we'll go over through the 2020... It's not.
Oh, yeah. Well, we need to cover that one on the 18th?
Yep, we can. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So we'll cover the 2020 tentative budget for the Boxer County. Whole purpose of this is to make sure that we present the budget to the public, and that any interested party has the opportunity to be heard. So tonight, we will just go over the budget. No decision will be made. And then on the 18th, we will have another meeting, obviously, and then we'll adopt the budget there of a formal resolution. Some of the highlights coming through, we'll discuss quickly. Just as a reminder, all these other entities that you see listed, they have their own budget hearings. They control their own budgets. However, as we are all very aware, we collect those taxes on their behalf and distribute the back debt to them. Shaun's office just finished. They're still going on, but November's the big push. They just finished, and they collect over $40 million in taxes in a month span. So it's pretty impressive what they're able to do. As you can see, the lion's share goes to the school district, with about 65%, 66% of those taxes going to the school district. We get 20%, 21%, and the others go to the other different entities. And they oversee their budgets. They have to have hearings, just like us, to discuss that. So for 2020, we are proposing a $9 million in the general fund for property taxes. That's what we anticipate the certified tax rate to collect for us, for our general operation rate. We will collect, anticipate to collect 1.7 million in assessing and collecting taxes to help run those functions in the county. Those mostly are the assessor and treasurer's office. My office gets some of it paid, recorder's office as well. The municipal service fund, this will be the third year with that tax ongoing. We anticipate to collect 815,000 there. And once again, that is for those residents who live in unincorporated areas who receive services that a municipality would provide for them, that the county is providing for them. That falls underneath police protection, fire protection, community development, fire, things like that. County library fund, we anticipate to collect around 396,000, and that is only on those residents without a municipal library. So when I lived in Perry, I paid the bookmobile. Now that I live in Brigham, I don't pay that, because I don't, I'm not in that service. Some of the other things in this year's budget, there was a 2% COLA for county employees, and the health insurance saw a 7.5% increase. I'm hoping that someday soon, those increases stop. Fund loans, in 2019, the general fund is loaning the tourism fund $825,000. That was done to complete the Bleacher Project. Payments, the back payment from tourism to the general fund will continue into 2020. That's why it's on here. These are the salaries for the elected officials for 2020. As you can see, all of them are paid the same, except for the attorney, commissioner, judge, and the sheriff. County commissioners are considered a part-time job for this purpose. So here is the operating budget for 2020. The main number that everyone's gonna care about. So since I presented the tentative budget to you, I decided to remove out the transfers. They kind of get double-counted, so I removed them out. So really, the budget for Boxer County is that $40,825,623. That is what we anticipate, that is what we are proposing for the Boxer County budget for 2020. As you can see over here on the side, it breaks out the different funds. We'll go through more detail what's in those funds. Each fund kind of has their own rules of what we can and cannot do within those. So a lot of times, that money, like for example, tourism money, it's funded with the transient tax, the hotel tax, and the restaurant tax. That money can't be sent over to the general fund to pay for the recorder or the treasurer. That can't be done. It has to be spent on specific purposes. So that's how, you know, we break things out in different funds. In the general fund, it is all activities not accounted for by somewhere else, is what it pretty much breaks down to. I usually tell people, it's everyone in this building, for the most part, and we also bring in the jail, some of the activities that take place there. And so you can see the different things in the justice and the attorney's office. Some of the big increases that we're gonna see this year are due to personnel. They're being driven by personnel. The commissioners made the decision to up the wage for public safety employees, and because of that, the budget goes up. I mean, once we increase someone's wage, we're also gonna increase the benefit line. Everything that's tied to their wage is gonna go up with it. So you can see the big increase in the jail corrections. You can see where last year we budgeted the 3.4, this year it were 4.6. That increase is due to the step increase that was given to our public safety employees, something that was needed to be done, to help retain them and to make sure they stay here going forward. Also, as we talk about in other hearings and settings, the county budgets very worst-case scenario. We budget revenues low and expenses high. So also in that corrections department, I don't remember the last time they were fully staffed, but we budget them as if they were going to be fully staffed. So you'll see, there's one department, the jail diversion department. That was a new department we created last year. We never were able to staff that department, so their actual expenditure for 2019 will be zero, but we're rolling that budget forward to 2020 in the hopes that they are able to staff that department. So that's one of the things that you'll see as we budget for the worst-case scenario. The municipal service fund, so this is I talked about. It's providing municipal services for the unincorporated areas of the county, and there resides community development. The inspections department, you can see the different ones in there. Couple of years ago, we decided to do an analysis of the sheriff's department, of patrol, detective, and emergency management, of how much of their service is being provided to the unincorporated area versus to those residents in the incorporated area. So we do an allocation of those departments. Some reside in the general fund, and some reside in the municipal service fund. And we do that based off of call volumes, responses to where they're going, and so that's why they are split between the two different funds. We are gonna transfer 1.5 million dollars from the municipal service fund over to the general fund to help offset some of those public safety costs. The 1.5 million is purely PILT. PILT is the money received from the federal governments for federally-owned lands, payment in lieu of taxes. You're all very aware of what that is, but... So that's what that money is. The landfill, it is our only operation in the county that's run like a business for accounting purposes. It's considered an enterprise fund. Gina does a great job. It continues to run in the black positive. We anticipate it to continue next year also to run in the positive. Justice Court Fund, that is Judge Christensen's department. So they bring in well over what their actual expenses are. We also anticipate to send some of the money from the justice court over to the general fund to offset some of the cost there. Tourism fund, this is where the fairgrounds resides, and also the county fair, and this is where Joan Hammer also resides, which I believe you're hearing a report from her group later today of the things they do in the county. So this is what I talked about. It is, its main revenue sources are the TRT and the TRCC, restaurant and hotel tax. We anticipate those funds to be spent this year. You can see the large actual budget for the fairgrounds this year. That was due to the Bleacher Project. Obviously, that is not taking place next year. On a good news, I ran a report for this year today of the county fair. The county fair is actually in the black for this year, which that is the first time that the county fair has been positive since I've been here. Currently, there are about 25,000 to the positive, which is a great thing. I know Jan does a hard job, and also the rodeo group, they had a much larger revenue in previous years, obviously, because of the capacity increase. CIP, it was late in the day, and I couldn't get the stupid graph to show right, and it was just frustrating me, so that's where it stays. So these are the projects. We have a CIP committee. It's made up of citizens from the community. They volunteer. I don't know why, but they do. They're good. I mean, they sit there and they take it serious. They review the departments come with five-year plans. They present what their needs are for the future. And those citizens really think things through. They ask questions of, well, have you thought about this? Have you thought about doing maybe something different here? So this is what was recommended back by that committee. So you can see through there, there are different funding sources that we plan on using. The assessor's office would like to purchase another vehicle. He has those assessing and collecting funds that we talked about in the first slide, so he's gonna use those funds to purchase a new vehicle. The fire department has asked for a different, for our water tenders, as they start to build out their tender fleet that Corey has talked to you guys about. They're wanting a new ambulance for the Grouse Creek, a stretcher for Grouse Creek. They have some MOU funds available to them that they've earned throughout the years, so that's what they plan on using to purchase those. They're not asking for any CIP funds. Gina has other projects at the landfill. She wants to put in a solid water line to hopefully avoid some of the issues she's having. And also, she'd like to purchase a steer, a skid steer. She doesn't want to purchase a steer. Anyway, the biggest project the county's looking at for the next year is the bookmobile building. The bookmobile has been saving money over the last couple of years, decade or so, trying to work towards this building. They would like to pull the trigger this year. They are gonna bring a million dollars to the table, and they are asking CIP to provide the other 620,000. They are recommending it be built out of the fairgrounds. So how this will, you know, how it works is they approve this money, recommend this money. The commissioners will approve it in the budget, or we'll discuss what you commissioners would like to do. And then once we give the okay, Cody begins doing his magic. He'll take it to bid. He'll see if those bids come back at, and then we'll have another discussion with the commission. If they come back at 1.9, the commission will then make the decision of, hey, do we continue, or what do we do here? So that is in the budget. You can also see the road department is planning on purchasing various equipment using their Class B roads. The one item that we will use CIP monies for is we are planning on buying 10 new vehicles for the sheriff's office. A lot of that has to do also with we've added different positions down there, so if they are getting staffed at the hopefully their levels, they will need more vehicles. And so that is the plan there. Lieutenant Summerall works with me on that, and he does a great job. So here's the library fund. This is what we talked about. So you can see what they normally spend. You know, they're around that 320,000, $400,000, where they're normally at, depending on if they're buying repairs to their bookmobiles or whatever. This year, we're clear up almost to $2 million, and it is for their building. So at the end of the day, this is how the Boxer County's budget breaks down. This is where the money is going. And a lot of times, I think, you know, we hear the word government-funded. Nothing's ever government-funded. It's taxpayer-funded. So I hope we're prudent with the money that we're trusted with. So 40% of our budget goes to public safety. That is obviously the sheriff's department, the fire department, ambulance, those folks who are out there doing hard work with little things. The rest, you can see where it breaks down. Future plans, we don't have any outstanding debt. We have no bond payments. We don't have that. As you've heard from our external auditors, very rare to see a county in that position. I fully anticipate using the certified tax rate for 2020. Hopefully, that doesn't change, but we'll see as it looks. Future plans, also, as we've looked, as the CIP has looked at things, they've talked about, maybe there is a need for a new administrative building. And then also, maybe an expansion is needed at the jail as numbers continue to rise. That is future plans. That is not happening next year. This is just, this is what the name of the slide is, future plans.
I'm gonna interrupt you for half a second. We'll now open the public hearing for the 2019 proposed budget amendments as well. Go ahead, Tom.
So for the proposed budget, I forgot to include that slide deck. So what they are is, so there's, we need a budget for Jan out of the fairgrounds. Somehow... Somehow during the 2019 budget process, we missed putting money into some of her lines. We just missed it. And so that's just bringing lines to where they should be. The other increase that we're gonna have to do is dealing with the bleacher project. We anticipated only needing to send over $500,000 from the general fund. Turns out, we're gonna need to send around 800,000 or so. I can pull up the
Actual first. You don't have anything secret on here, do you, David?
Uh, just my family pictures.
But with that, you guys can keep talking. Any questions from the commissioners I can ask, answer?
No, you covered it.
So on, on the CIP stuff, let's say Cody comes in at, say, 1.2 million instead of 1.6. So then the CIP recoups.
We will use all of the bookmobile first.
Yeah, so they, they'll still use their millions.
Yes.
And then just the other goes back to CIP.
Correct.
And then they'll end up paying it back throughout the next however many years?
We anticipate them paying that back by the end of next year. Alright, so there's the actual budget amendments. The other change
8:25.
The other change we're putting in there is for buildings and grounds. They are anticipating to do a project here in the courthouse to the anticipation is that we will save money going forward to convert over to LEDs. So we're putting more money into his budget to finish that project off and also more money in his budget to secure the clerks' area with some more modern technology. But with that, I think I've covered the 2020 proposed, and then this is the 2019
amended.
amended. So.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Well done, as always. You said it was supposed to be boring, and I found it semi-entertaining, so. Yeah, I'm the numbers geek, so. Okay. Very good. We have opened both of our public hearings for the 2020 budget and also for the 2019 proposed budget amendments. If there is anyone that would like to come forward and speak at this time, please do so. Please limit your time to three minutes and please speak to the subject at hand.
Deanna Hardy-Bergam. As a citizen of this county, I want to oppose the budget because it's, it's very expensive. And when he says it's not government-funded, but it's taxpayer-funded, it's forced. The citizens are forced to pay for all these many programs that you have. I've been coming for many years now, and it seems like the budget just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And as you get bigger and bigger, our wallets get smaller and smaller. You have many programs and organizations that should not be receiving our money. It should be back to the free market. I never used a bookmobile, but yet I'm forced to pay for it. This building that you want to build for the bookmobile is not a public necessity. Libraries can be taken care of through the free market system, and I ask that you do that because it's not fair for us that never use these things, but we're still forced to pay for them. That's not liberty. Let's see. I am concerned about your increase in your wage. You're now up to 50,000 for a part-time job. For the, for the citizen who lives in Boxer County, their full-time wage is around 43,000 to 45,000. So you're only part-time and your, your wage has dramatically increased. Also, I don't think it's right that our county attorney should be clear up there in the 126,000. We need to look again. We are a rural area. We don't make a lot of money in these parts. And we ask you to relook at everything that you do in the budget. All those things that should be returned back to the free market should go back, especially the redevelopment economic development department. This is not fair. I've said it to you many, many times, it's not fair for our government to pick winners and losers. It's not fair for you to take our money and help other businesses come into our county while others are, are being denied. This needs to go back to the free market. If you truly love this republic, you will stand for it. And as brothers in Christ, why are you willingly putting our fellow brothers and sisters into financial bondage? Because that's what government does. And you're supposed to be protecting each individual's right, not, not continuing to take our money so that you can do with it what you want to do with it. Thank you.
Anyone else at this time?
I'll make a motion and close the public hearings.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks again, Tom. It's a lot of work to keep track of all those different line items. Joan, do you have a report for us?
I do, but I'm gonna ask my folks to come up with me.
You brought a posse?
I, I always bring my posse.
Alright.
You look good.
Some of them have badges and stuff. I don't know.
It's your part of us.
So I'm gonna talk really fast because we're gonna do something a little bit different this year and have a couple of reports from some of our partners. We've got some new folks here, so I want, I want you to be able to hear from them. And, and it was just a great year. So this is my, this is a portion of my tourism council. They're, they're just awesome. That's all I, I can say. And Fisher Summers, he's, he's part of us as well. Tours tourism
When I make it, huh?
Tourism, tourism really benefits Boxer County. And we always, I say this every year, it's, it's clean revenue. Folks come in, they spend their money, they go home, and we really like it. Utah visitors spent 9.75 billion dollars last year. That's with a B. Each Utah household pays 1,300 dollars in fewer taxes because of, of the, the impact that tourists have on the state of Utah. So, you know, we each get that, we each get that relief in our, in our homes. And so tourism really does make a difference. Just really quick, just some highlights from 2019. I think we can't let this go by without talking about the Golden Spike sesquicentennial. It was amazing. It was tiring. There are so many things I'm glad we did, and I'm glad to wait for another 50 years before we do them again. But it was a, it was a really, it was a great year. But the, the thing that I loved the most was that Boxer County really had the opportunity to shine. And being in the spotlight resulted in strong numbers from, from all of our partners that Joe heard from today. The fair was another great year. I don't think, again, I, I think the, the new bleachers were a hit. They were full every night. People loved the reserved seating. We're just gonna continue down that path. And I think that, I think that everybody just, they were, it made all the difference, I think. And, and to see the, the fair in the black this year is really exciting.
And the final number from the lodge stockpile was just 1.35 for the kids.
Yep, so that's, you know, I mean, that's a, that's not even, that's not even reflected in, in these numbers that we're talking about. On a state level, we love our partnerships. They've made a real difference for Boxer County to, to be able to have a voice with the Governor's Rural Partnership Board, Utah Tourism Industry Association, Utah Office of Tourism. Those partnerships are really strong, and that, that allows Boxer County to have a great voice. And, and I'm fortunate enough to be able to be that voice for all of my rural partners as well. And, and that's, that's just something that's really allowed us to participate at a, at a higher level. So just some things to look forward to in 2020. We'll have new branding. Most of y'all have seen what, what we're going to be doing in the, in the coming year. I think that's gonna be great. Spiral Jetty turns 50 in 2020, so that will be a fun, that will be a fun celebratory year as we, as we just celebrate that. Our lodging partners are keen to start a hospitality group in the county. It's, they're gonna, they're gonna take it. They're gonna run with it. They're also anxious to invite all of our other hospitality partners, restaurants and different things like that. So that'll be a fun new project to look forward to next year. But really, what, what we're here, the reason that we're here and the reason that, that tourism is successful in Boxer County is because we have great partners. And that's really what my job is, is to, you know, help our partners to, again, help them bring folks to the county. So we are just, I mean, we're just gonna, each of these folks are gonna take about three minutes. We're gonna hear from our new interim superintendent from Golden Spike National Historical Site, Lee Bushowski. And then we'll hear from Mike Dunphy and Kathy Stover from Bear River Migratory Bird Refuge. And then and then James Morgan will give a, a report from Willard Bay State Park. It's been a great year for all of our partners, and I'm anxious to hear from them. So we'll just give them each a couple of minutes, and then we'll wrap it up.
You warned him about us, right?
Good evening. Again, Lee Bushowski, common spelling.
Like his sound.
And I hail from Dinosaur National Monument out to the east. I'm the chief ranger there. I've been there for a little over nine years now. Virtually from Minnesota, where it gets a lot colder in here. You betcha. So, and gosh, three minutes or less. Looking at our bookstore sales, we had a phenomenal year. We've seen a 48% increase from last year. Well over half a million dollars. A lot of that, obviously gifts on the May 10th weekend, which I was here for, by the way. I was part of the Park Service Incident Command Team for that. Our overall visitor statistics, if you include that weekend, we're up 73%. Sounds tremendous. You take those three days out, and we're only up, believe it or not, 8.3% from last year. So not quite the numbers maybe we're all expecting, but still up nearly, you know, 10%. Some things that are in the works right now. We're working on a press release for the upcoming STEAM Festival. December 28th, 29th, and 30th, we're working on the press release to hopefully have that out by the end of the week. I do have a draft schedule if anyone's chomping at the bit to see what we're up to. It's in the works, so there'll be some tweaking to it. We got, just gotta make sure we have the staff available for all three days.
Was that a dig towards government shutdown like it happened last year?
Well, you never, you know, knock on, whatever this Yes, right now, the continuing resolutions to, through the 20th, so we'll see what happens.
Good.
We are well into the mix, working on our exhibit update for our interior of our visitor center. I have our graphic design projects here. It is gonna be quite spectacular when it's all said and done in a couple of years. If anyone would like to see more of this, I'd be more than happy to, to give you a copy. I can put it on a thumb drive and share it with you. It's a large document to send via email. Along with that, you, you're probably familiar with Distant Thunder, the bison statue. We're looking at installation of that as soon as the weather warms up. The foundation has established the southeast corner of the visitor center as to where that will be going. So I have kind of a, a basic rendering of that right here. If you want a copy of this, I can send a copy to you as well.
Just send it all to me and I'll make sure it gets to everybody.
It'll, it'll look spectacular when it's all said and done. It's one of the things you'll see right away as you drive into the parking lot. I do have, whether you wanna see it as good news or bad news, the park service is making fees across the board, across the, the all parks. Whether either a tier one, tier two, or tier three park, standard fees across the board. So we're looking at a fee increase this year. Unfortunately, it's gonna be a doubling of 10 to 20 dollars. It was supposed to start January 1st, and I pushed it to May 1st. So we can work a little more with our civic engagement on that. But that's something that the park service has established, and it's been in effect now for a couple of years. So that's coming down the pike. The good news is we are 100% fee revenue parks, so that money stays within the park itself. As long as we come up with projects on how to spend it. One of those projects are the replacement of the benches. If you've been out there, you, you sat on those railroad ties for what probably felt like eternity when it was only maybe 40 minutes. We used our fee revenue dollars and we're getting new benches that'll actually be comfortable to sit on. Those will be coming sometime this winter. We'll have them in place by next May.
Cool. Looking forward to it. No, thank you. Let us know what else we can do.
So interim Lee, is this gonna be permanent or are they gonna ship you off again?
I, uh,
Sorry.
I'm a rail fan on the Moll Railroader. This place is truly heaven for me. My wife's a full-time school teacher. I have a, a boy in high school and another one in middle school, so they're not quite ready to move yet. But it was such an awesome opportunity. I couldn't pass it up.
Alright.
Glad to have you.
I'm here until mid-Febuary. The announcement for the permanent job is out, out right now. Hopefully by March or April, we'll have a permanent superintendent.
Well before May. Cool. Thanks, Lee.
Thanks.
First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I know all of you, but I'm Kathy Stover, Visitor Services Manager at Bear River Migratory Bird Refuge, and I want to introduce one of our new management team members who are bringing good energy to the refuge and doing good things for the refuge and for the community. This is Mike Dunphy, our deputy refuge manager.
Sorry we didn't make it last night. We had budget meetings and other things that we were having to go to, so we're sorry we didn't make it last night.
Well, we, we missed you, but we understand all of the commitments that everybody has. And it seems like it's either peaceful or feminine. Last night was overwhelming for everybody, but we had a good turnout.
Good.
We saw a good range of people who came in, and we had some very good questions.
You're gonna have to come sit down.
So, Mike, do you wanna come up?
Grab a chair. Is there another chair?
Okay. So in the meantime, while they're getting a chair, would any of you like one of the new hunting virtuals?
Thanks.
You probably have too many of your briefcase, right?
He said he's given up hunting. That's what I heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to follow up on saying that we're really happy with having our new managers in place now. We're moving forward, and you're going to be seeing a lot more of the management team. So that is a very good thing. We've had a very good year since we started getting new blood into the refuge. Like I say, moving forward, we did launch the hunt expansion plan last year. We saw a little bit of a bump in hunting increase. Not a lot, but a little. And we were able to open back up our visitor's center to our regular hours, which includes being open every Saturday now. So we're very happy about that. That enables us to serve the community better, work with our partners, and also launch our public programs that are most enjoyed by the public. Our numbers, our total visitation last year, we saw about 107,000 visitors to the refuge, of which about 35,000 were hunters. That is an extrapolated number based on cars in parking lots and boat launchings and so forth. That number has gone That number has gone up a little bit, but making, has made a big jump over the past 10 years. So, we're always faced with where to park all of the cars and boat trailers. So, also, birding continues to be part of the great wildlife observation destination for folks and we saw about 40,000 visitors coming for wildlife observation. Now, of that number, we know most of those can also be called photographers because everybody has a phone, right? Everybody is a photographer now. And we have some of the best photos from amateur photography being fed into the National Wildlife Refuge system in the system. We're really fortunate to have so many talented folks visit the refuge. And then the balance of that 107 to 9,000 visitors is taken up by our public events, our environmental education, and other events that we work with our community partners on. Our environmental education specialist is supported by our wonderful Friends Group and we're hoping and looking forward to that partnership continuing and the support going and the interface with our local school districts. Additionally, the gift shop is supported by the, the Friends Group and I, our bookstore manager isn't here, but she would like for everybody to share the word for Christmas this year that some of the most special and unique gifts for wildlife enthusiasts are in that bookstore. And the best puzzle diversity and variety in northern Utah can't be beat. But we do invite you to come over to the refuge and see what is happening. There are several projects in the works. Part of a new trail is going to be going in. Walking trails, number one request from last night's open house, and so we'll be working on that. Everybody wants a little bit of extra time or places to go and with our increased hours, people will have the extra time to walk around the building and out into the marsh at sunset now. Yeah.
Awesome.
So we're making progress. Thank you for this time. Mike, do you have anything to add?
I'm just here for the, I'm just here for the moral support. Kathy's the expert that runs the program, but I just want to tell you guys, it's really exciting to be a part of this community. I've worked a lot of places and I would say this is one of the places where we've had the most engagement with the community, so that's really exciting.
Good.
Looking forward to.
You'll see that guy a lot.
Yep, yeah, I do see him. There's a few faces I already know, so that's great.
He won't, he won't always be in a shirt and tie when you see him, but you'll see him. Thank you. We appreciate what you do. It's great.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
And of course, thanks to the tourism board. Great partnership, we can't do it without you.
Almost didn't recognize you, James.
Catch you on a day off.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm recovering from shoulder surgery, so I'm on my duty, just so you don't get my badge today.
There you go.
So, been a great year at Willard Bay. Our visitation was over 517,000. So we keep continuing to, to break all the, the numbers, the, the marks we've had before. So we were able to, in 2019, get our budget raised and in turn, we've actually increased our profit loss with that. We were just recognized for that. It was announced last week for that, so we were, again, increased our revenue with that. So we were, that's a great thing to say. That not only we got, yeah, not only did we get more to operate, we, we were able to bring in more with it. We changed, we did a little bit of tiering, so our day use fees went up to $25 on Saturdays because we were filling to capacity, so we were raising that. Then people get a little bit of a break on Fridays and Sundays. We continued to fill to capacities on those Saturdays and we also started filling to capacity on some of the Sundays, which we weren't seeing before. We, we were getting busy, but not as busy as we've been, so we've really seen a, a jump in that visiting. Here also, our classification was changed to a park three, which is the highest level that there is or the highest park. You can be, the biggest parks there are Jordan L, Down Sand Hollow, Antelope Island, Bear Lake, those are all park threes that we're now consider park three with them, which shows how big and how much we do. There was only three parks that were changed classification this year, us, Deer Creek State Park, and Deadwood State Park, so. So just shows how much we're, we're doing with that. Some of the things that we were able to add this year, we got another cabin. We'd had two before that part of the tech advisory board was able to help us do, but because of how well those first two did, we were able to get a third one that was funded. And also, we got two trailers funded that we have in place that people rent out. We weren't sure how that was gonna work out, but as soon as we had them in in mid-June, they immediately started being rented out and all of our, three of our cabins and those two trailers are rented out pretty much every single weekend throughout the rest of the summer. And it's been a great addition to the park. We also added in some additional parking just because of how busy we were and as I mentioned, we were still filling to capacity, so even though we added in approximately 50 more parking spots, they were filling up every weekend. So we had some additional funding to add in some more dirt parking, to add more opportunities for people to come in. Another opportunity we have is the pond that's by our office. We were able to get some funding for that and it's out to bid right now. We hope to have it awarded in January and start the construction on that so that it will be probably mid to late summer when it's completed, but we'll be able to have an additional approximately 400 parking spots to go along with that day use pond area. It'll be all non-motorized, day use area there for people. That'll be a, a really cool thing for us to do. That'll be phase one. We're gonna hopefully get funding for a phase two that will be developing a new entrance station for the park. That will be the extreme north end of that. Part of the problem that we've had is it'll be bad traffic to the freeway as people are coming in. If we're able to get this additional funding and reroute, for one, we need new entrance station anyway. It will serve as entrance visitor center and office for our full-time staff, be able to accommodate more people lined up without blocking the traffic. And so hopefully we'll be able to get that and see that in the coming years as well. So it's really, we're, we just continue to grow and continue to, to have more and more opportunities, so.
That's awesome.
That's great.
I want a zip line from the top to the bottom, though.
Keep saying.
I know. All these days, we can shoot ducks on the way by.
That'll kind of be like a mini water park where that pond is, won't it?
Yeah, so we're, in the plan, we'll have the deep end be approximately 50 foot deep, so people will actually be able to scuba dive and certify. It'll be an actual one-of-a-kind thing for our area, people can come certify in their scuba diving and hopefully have something that's sunk there for people to look at. One of the ideas out there was like a little plane or something, but not sure if we'll be able to do that unless somebody donates it, but yeah, we'll have that. We'll have fishing docks for people to do. We'll have beach area, approximately a third of it will be beach area.
That'd be cool.
We'll have a water park similar to what we have in our marina in there and we'll have a concession area that will be there. We're, we're gonna have places for like food trucks to be able to park and service people and, and so, yeah, we have a lot of things we're looking at.
That's awesome.
That's good.
Did great work.
I don't know if I want to see Commissioner Summers' zip line, it was a shotgun.
Hey now.
I would see Commissioner Summers' zip line from the top of Willard Beach. Or I could.
There we go.
Hey, everybody's gotta have a plan.
Bucket list.
Oh, you guys, you did great work. Thanks.
Thanks, James.
I just want to thank the county for partnership, you know, everybody involved in tourism, county sheriffs, you know, we have a great relationship with the entire county. We're glad to be a part of the community.
Thank you.
Hope you have a speedy recovery.
Thank you. So you can see that I'm pretty spoiled with such awesome partners. I just wanted to, and first of all, doing some quick math between the numbers that these folks shared with you tonight, what we see at, at our, our celebrations, our, the county fair, the, you know, Peach Days, Little Valley Days, all of the, all of the celebrations, Perry, Fourth of July, a million people come to Boxheller County because we're just that cool. So I just wanted to, and to thank the commission for your leadership and your support, the things that we do, we couldn't do without, without your support and it's a good time to be at Boxheller County.
It is.
Awesome.
Thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything.
Cool programs.
Stephen Norman. I need to bring you a couple of flags. I need flags folded.
Also a reminder, our Christmas lights counted today. Last Friday.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Jenica, got a policy update for us.
Do we have no PAs?
I have a few. There's not too many.
Oh.
I'll give them to you when I'm done. So you asked me to update policy three to include a longevity salary increase for the people who have been here 30 years, so it basically reads that when an employee's been at or above the maximum current salary range for three years and have a satisfactory performance evaluation within the past 12 months, they are eligible for a 3% increase.
Cool.
That's the gist of it.
Were those numbers included in this? Okay, that's what I thought.
They are included in the proposed budget, yes.
Very good. Just wanted to clarify that, so.
Yep.
Okay.
You don't need a motion for that, do you? I thought we already did that.
I need a motion to approve the policy change.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the policy three update.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Gina is not here and so, did you want to cover this or do you just want me to give a brief overview?
Yeah, you can just do a brief.
Okay. This is a contract between Boxheller County Landfill and Allos Environmental. They're the operators of the Promontory Point landfill. This would allow us to take waste, it could be municipal solid waste, CND, different types, to them if anything happened with our landfill and also allow other streams to, to go to them if, if there was contract or if it was needed. And so, this is kind of a stopgap measure that helps us if there is some sort of an emergency and we can't use ours for, for whatever reasons, so. Okay. How's that?
I'll make a motion to approve contact 19-54 between Boxheller County Landfill and Allos Environmental.
I'll second that motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is that it?
Got that.
Just gotta sign some, oh, RDA. Yeah, let's, let's open our RDA.
Scott's just here for the fun.
I'm looking right at him when I say that. Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and move into our RDA meeting.
Did I close all part-time plans?
Yeah.
Well, you kind of did it together.
Yeah, okay. I was just thinking about that.
But I'll make him look smart.
You'll make him look smart?
Yeah, that's a, that's a full-time job for a part-time guy.
Okay, we are open. Did you gentlemen have a chance to review the minutes from our September 4th meeting? That was our last RDA.
Wow.
Yeah, it's been a little while.
Give me a second to change the tape.
We can do that.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 4th, 2019 for the RDA.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's see. Mitch, you want to cover these, these two items?
Sure. They definitely both go hand in hand. The first one is the First Amendment to the License Agreement. So with Standard Wellness, we are under contract to sell them the 17 acre parcel out in Corin in the Ag Park. This First Amendment to the License Agreement pretty much extends their license to March 31st, which is also to the Second Amendment to the real estate contract would be the closing deadline for those, for that property. So it extends out the closing deadline, adds a little bit of earnest money and a small fee to the, to continue to use the property for the license.
Monday. Looks good.
So Scott Erickson's here with Standard Wellness and he'll.
Thank you, commissioners. If you have driven by the property, we have things happening. They've put fences up as the pods have been delivered this week. There should be plants starting to grow in the next couple of days, so if you're interested, we'd love to take you over and see that at some point, but this really, these two agreements, all they do is put back the final date of the purchase into the first quarter of next year, just for cash flow reasons and things like that. So we don't foresee any change in eventual outcome. We're putting money on the ground right now to make it happen. This is just a financing issue.
Looks like power and everything with Rocky Mountain is gonna be good.
It's all taken care of. It'll be connected by the end of the week.
Yeah, but there's a lot of stuff happening when I drove by there.
Actually, tonight, they'll have a crane over there putting the pods where they want them. So if you're bored after your meeting, you can drive over and watch Crane.
Let's go get some takeout.
There you go. So those, those pods, I mean, you're getting them in a little bit later than you want. Is that gonna push into probably towards the end of January, 1st, February, before you have some that are ready to, to harvest and process?
So we'll have, we'll have product available for purchase in March.
Okay.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You gentlemen have any questions?
Nope. Have a good holiday.
Still, still gonna purchase in March, just, all right.
Likely before the end of this, but we just need to get it in.
Have a good holiday. Let us know if we can do anything.
Okay.
Okay. I'd entertain motions on these, these two amendments.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to Standard Wellness 1904 and 1905.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
You can go out and play with Crane. Awesome. Stay warm.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the RDA.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the RDA. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion that we go into a closed session to talk about personnel. You pointed to talk about Jenica.
And litigation.
And litigation.
Okay.
Just to comment a quick here to, you have a health insurance. A lot of us have lost our health insurance, but there's new probably, there are ministries that's cost sharing instead of insurance program. So maybe they could do something about employees, maybe paying them and then they're gonna take the money to go and find their own healthcare insurance. Because we can afford ours and we should be paying someone else who gives employees money and travel and goes to check out their insurance.
Hi, y'all.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Which one of you guys is first?